Okay, the meeting is being recorded? So the meeting is being recorded?
Yeah.
Harrison, you want to start?
Good morning. Thank you all for attending this special meeting. My name is Harrison Pierce. I'm chairman of Health and Human Services Commission. Just a little bit of history. You know, one of our functions as Health and Human Services Commission is to direct grants to agencies which are involved with our human services and health and public. And we've done that over the last couple of meetings. We did submit it to the Board of Finance, et cetera. And there were lots of questions that were raised from the community, from also Health and Human Services Commission, from town council, from parents, from government. And so we, this information was also given to the Board of Finance who asked us to relook at our budget and the grants and to note any changes that we made or were considering to then on the 27th of February. So that's the one reason for the special meeting. The other is to address the issue of our calendar and meetings, which was raised at the end of our last regular meeting. So we've, we've done lots of work, listened to lots of people, read some letters, et cetera. And I think we've come up with kind of a good solution which satisfies the needs of the community as well as the Board of Selectmen. And we're going to pass some of this over to Bethany because she was on the human's duty with this doing great job. Thank you for thinking everything as well, the research, et cetera.
Ready?
All right. Bethany Zorro, Director of Human Services. I have definitely sent out a lot of material. I apologize, but I wanted you to get as much information as possible to make, to make your proposal, your final decision. So my recommendation, if anybody needs me to go through the history really quickly. We did a recommendation, usual budget, agency requests, and then I gave my recommendation number one, which was about 50,000 less. It was, our original agency request was 354,000. The, my recommendation number one was 300,000. So it went down about 54,000. So then we had the Human Service Commission. You all agreed to the proposal. And then we had, I met with the first, a couple of the first selectmen. And we were told that with the budget year, the type of we were having and the needs to cut back, that we needed to cut back 50,000. So we came back at this other level of 249.5, proposal number two. And then Board of Selectmen gave me the information that the teen talk counselor at the middle school was going to be cut completely. So they lowered the proposal to 201.5. I, because of the community and their outreach and human services as a whole and what is needed in the community that I see, I have made recommendation number two for a total of 259,500. And what consists of these numbers, this is where I've given you the information that I base my recommendation on. So if we want to start out with the get about first, the agency request was 65,000. We would like, I request that we have the $50,000 as I recommended in the first recommendation. Of 65, I know that I would love to give them all the money of seeing how they operate and what it does to the community. At this time, however, in keeping with, you know, trying to keep our budget as low as possible, but still helping the community, I'm recommending 50,000. The rides were up received in, for the year, we had 9,500 rides, which is incredible. You can look at the sheet. We're up to 96.48, so 9,650 rides for December, I mean for 2023, from January through December. That was up from the year before, which was 7,900 rides. I mean, these are rides to the food pantry, to medical care, to town, people that are not mobile, that have an aide with them. They can have a wheelchair assist with the aide to grocery store, medical, anywhere. This is a vital aspect of the community and I feel that town should support it as much as possible. With these numbers and this demographic, it's highly valued for our town.
Bethany, before you go further, Commissioner Parks, why make any, what was the justification for going up to 65? And why did we feel that we could bring them down to 50? I mean, I know you said as ex officio member?
Yes.
Right? Oh, the board with the increased rides and increased demands, how else are they going to raise, raise money?
So there is private funding, hospitals contribute, Sanford Hospital, Norwalk Hospital. They apply to grants. There's a grant writer on the board and he applies to banks and area. The increase, you know, of outfitted van now, the last price was, it used to be 60,000. The last pricing for a new van was 75,000.
Didn't they have one donated though?
Yep, yep. But these vans, they turn over quickly, the little village riding, the town riding. And they have to be safe. They have to, for wheelchair assistance, yeah, as you know. The other thing is the employees, they're getting paid under what Norwalk is paying like $20 an hour. We need to up so that our drivers aren't leaving to go to other, we're trying to get competitive with the times. Gas, the gas has gone up. So there's all these operating costs as well as keeping the van safe on the road and reliable.
So you, you feel that they justified the 60, the 65,000?
I feel they justified the 65, 65, but in terms of our budget at this point, you know, going up year to year, we've usually given them 46,000. Last year, we gave them 47. I'd like to increase that to 50. The previous year, they requested 50. They upped it to 65 this year. And rightly so. At the same time, I don't think we can make as big a jump in all due respect.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at like the total town budget.
Yeah.
Right? The total town budget as we're looking at some of these numbers are rounding errors when you look at the total town budget. So my, my question really is, is besides budgetary constraints, if that's the reason you're giving, is there any other reason?
No.
To justify reducing get abouts request from 65 to 50?
No, there's absolutely no other reason except I just trying to, we, we can't give, I, I just, it's just a lot of money. It's our second highest amount that we give. And I'm just trying to spread it around. And I know, you know, the private funding that they can get, you know, hoping for another great year of, of the events and fundraising. We'll see what happens, but I'm trying to inch it up year by year.
We have, as a commission, have, you know, set aside that we're going to set priorities and maybe instead of trying to spread it as many places as we can, looking at those that really have the major, the most impact in New Canaan. I think our seniors is, is a, is a group that need to be focused on. Just as we talked about, you know, kids in crisis or kids that we looked at suicidal ideation rates and the increase that that has happened, we've seen what's happened in other towns. So I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that your recommendation is not based upon the actual need. That it is based upon what your thoughts are is how do we keep our budget within a certain, a certain level?
Correct. Because one of the conversations I had with first selectmen, if you look at historically, how we've gone up year to year, in 2021, we are 135,000. You know, we're now, we're creeping up and I just want to keep that a little under control. I'm trying to create a balance between, right, I don't want to do it at the expense of one of these agencies. At the same time, we do have to look at the trend and I don't want to scare anybody away from Board of Finance, Selectmen, Town Council. I want to show that I are, you know, fiscally responsible. But in terms of the value, I'd love to give 65,000, but I just think.
Well, we're just saying in terms of, you know, total budget and, you know, I'll wait for another commissioner to jump in here. But the New Canaan Urgent Assessment is really what kicked our budgetary numbers up.
Exactly.
So it's, I think it's, it's, we have to look at it in context, right? If we were going from 169 to 246 without adding that line item, that's a different story. But when you're looking at the New Canaan Urgent Assessment, which we all voted for, which the, everyone, Board of Finance, the, you know, commissioners have all voted for, it has to be, you know, put in context with, with that addition, that line item as well.
Right. And that line item, to jump ahead for that, the urgent assessment program, that was, that was a town, it is a town and private with Silver Hill Hospital agreement that there would be 50,000 coming to them for fiscal year '25. That was put in the budget for human services. That was not voted, we agreed, we, we voted on the urgent assessment program and having the money go there, but it was not our money. But it was placed into our agency grants.
No, understood. And that.
And that's what I want to, yeah, so that 50,000.
But if the town made a commitment to give $50,000 a year, then how can we make a recommendation to cut that to 25?
So the 25,000, the extra 25,000 is coming from the opioid settlement. We have now, we received opioid settlement money, about $80,000.
That real full amount, but then still 50.
So right. So if you look down the notes, there's, exactly. So thank you. The, the 50,000, it will be, we will honor that 50,000. But when the first selectman approved the appropriation of 50,000 for the opioid settlement, it does qualify for the remediation use of that money.
Is there any holdups on this or is this completely approved, the opioid settlement?
So, so we're supposed to get, if you, on the website, so the Opioid Settlement Commission, New Canaan is supposed to get about $270,000 over the next five, 10 years. We have already received check in the mail deposited, $80,000. So this is the $80,000. I have 25,000 has been appropriated for that. So that's why I took 25,000 off this line item. They still are getting $50,000, but from two different entities.
That's not a major cut.
It's not a cut. Yeah.
Can I just ask, so down the road, then this 25 is going to have to be done again next year and after that.
So that's where, right, to have the year 50,000 that was put in our, exactly. That has to be reassessed in terms of the contract that's signed between public and private partnership.
Which is set for this year.
But we would be set for this year with the 25,000 coming from the grant agencies plus the 25 from the opioid settlement approval.
I just want to respond to, to Russ's point about the get about, which I worked with seniors for years and I just know how critical that valuable it is and seen increase. But I do want to say that in the context of all the funding that we're doing, you know, we had to make some hard decisions. And in fact, you're cutting, cutting grants to, you know, another elder house, another senior. And I think you've done a very good job of making a very difficult situation available as possible. I really, I commend you as well as for all the unbelievable data that.
And, and if the commission wants to vote for it, I can, I, I will propose that at Board of Finance too. So if this is, this is my recommendation.
Right.
It is not, yeah, if you as a commission choose to go higher, I will support that.
When we go through the list, we'll see that.
Okay.
Appropriating the funds as well as we could. So don't, don't forget that the request on the part of John Carlson and the Selectmen was to, when we had the 299.5, to please cut that by $50,000. We had, the numbers were going up 20% per year. Was there, there are explanations for it, et cetera. And the other thing was after she had spoken to people from at least one other town, that there was, the grants were being directed to those citizens of the town itself and those which were more countywide were not. We have, as you go down the line, we'll see that, but there was not a lot of utilization on these last four things. So we, we pared it down to, I think, 249. We'll take, we'll see when we get finished with this. And which satisfies the Selectmen's request and by virtue of the total numbers and also eliminating some of the other agencies, which we were not, we're not exclusively focused on in Canaan and which our utilization has diminished somewhat. And this year, we're kind of gifted by virtue, by virtue of the opioid. It's going to be another issue next year and we'll deal with this opioid funding that's going towards New Canaan Urgent Assessment. It's going towards New Canaan Cares. We also have credit left over from our teen talk counselor that we're going to use this year. We will have some credit next year too. These are all involved in the numbers we provided. Just like which we can discuss further as we go down the line and then vote on.
How about on the get about, Tom Ferguson? That's been around forever. It's a, it's a mainstay of our service to seniors and that. And, you know, half, almost half the rides are medical and those are serious deals. It's kind of like the ambulance corps, not life or death, but really important to people's health. And we sure wouldn't be cutting support of the ambulance corps. I don't see why get about the entity any different. I think their volume of services went down with the pandemic. It's up now. So in terms of their volume of service, that, that wouldn't argue for a big increase. But I, they may be facing increases in their operating expenses to tick down the K and maybe cost of vans. So we should anticipate a need for higher support in the future. If we can just do 50 now, that's an increase of 6%, from last year. So that's, I feel good about that direction because it costs more money to run things, particularly with hourly workers. They're getting paid a lot more than they were years ago. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Kids in Crisis. I put the recommendation back to the 144,000, which would cover the high school teen talk counselor at 96,000. And then half of the Saks Middle School teen talk counselor. With the other half, once again, doing public-private partnership, getting other funds, which I've spoken with New Canaan Community Foundation. We have the opioid settlement money, which also would qualify as a remediation use, having the kids in crisis teen talk counselor. She does do educating and assessing. So that would qualify of, so I would like for human services at least to pay half of this middle school teen talk counselor. You've seen all the information. Susan Bliss just sent a letter. She is Director of Student Services in terms of the position at Saks and the how it's invaluable to the mental health and wellbeing of our New Canaan students and families. I received an email, but I cannot, as we've been in this meeting, the principal of Saks Middle School sent an email in favor of maintaining the Saks Middle School counselor, teen talk counselor. This is a work in progress. My goal is if we could pay half this year through public-private funding, but talking with Sheri Shapiro, Denise Quahley at Kids in Crisis, New Canaan Community Foundation, other philanthropic entities in the area, we want to make this a sustainable, a sustainable to be held as in, in our Saks Middle School as well as the high school, a position that we're not every year trying to fight for the dollars for. But it is definitely will be a staple for mental health at the middle school, high school level. There are Ridgefield, Greenwich, there, but now they're getting elementary school teen talk, not teen talk counselors, but beginning the process of, of mental health in that lower level as well. And if you look at the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program, child guidance of the teen talk counselors' reports on what they're seeing, it is all, the comparison is equal in terms of anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, everything. All the numbers that I've sent you are all in keeping, it's the top, depression and anxiety are the top two subjects that kids are going into. See the teen talk counselors. As well as when you look at the referrals, the referrals, one of the highest referral rates is the faculty and staff at the, at the public school referring them to the teen talk counselor. That's one of the highest referrals that, that, or else the self-referral. Kids know about the teen talk counselor and they're going in and using, using their services, not just once. So building rapport.
Commissioner Parks, I'll just, question on the kids in crisis that we have made as a commission. We've made children and distressors that they have, anxiety, a high priority virus. And I thank everyone that sent letters in of support for it and including the, the director, the counselor for, for Saks. So my question is, is bringing back to a budgetary level. How many months was the teen counselor actually working at Saks? We have a half-time position here. Was the position open for any period of time and for how long has it been open for?
So there is a teen talk counselor there now.
Right.
Right. And we would like the same person to continue.
Was it, was it open for a long period of time last year?
As a guest last year.
Right.
Yeah, so she's.
What we have is credit from the Kids in Crisis Teen Talk Counselor because Grace Long left, so the high school had no one for the first semester.
Right.
So that's where we have this $32,000 credit.
Credit.
Which I would like to use 10 of that right now to decrease our Kids in Crisis burden to 134, plus the 10 from the credit. Make it 144 and that will whittle this down at the end of this to 249.5, which was our goal.
Say it again.
Say it.
We have $34,000 in credit because of the teen talk counselor at the high school for the first semester. So that's our money.
So they were looking to fill that position of, oh, Grace Long left.
Right, got it.
Unexpectedly. So to fill that, the, the vetting process, you know, the, the Kids in Crisis takes it seriously as well as the school. They have to okay the teen talk counselor too. So it's a great vetting that they do, but it did take six, wait, yeah, how many, eight thousand, so four months to fill that position. And so there is $32,000 credit that we can work with, talking to Kids in Crisis. And as Harrison proposed, maybe taking 10,000 of that from the high school teen talk counselor credit and putting it over. And so therefore this year's budget, even, I want to request 144 to maintain that and have it on record. But if we wanted, we, once again, we can take 10,000.
It'll be 144, but 10 of it would come from this credit, which would leave us with 22 next year. Because next year, we're going to have to deal with a number of issues without the opioid settlement, et cetera.
And we might get more money from them, but we can't work on what we might get. Exactly.
Do we, do we have a similar outcry when this position would remain unfilled for a period of time? And do we need to look at, how do we make this so that there's not an opening in that position?
It's good to sustain it for the foreseeable future. However, it's, you know, we haven't had great success with it over the last few years with people leaving, not being able to fill the position. I spoke to my niece's husband, who was in charge of this whole category of guidance, et cetera, in Nurs Shell and now Palom. And he said, they don't have Kids in Crisis per se, but they've got another name for it. He said, the problem is you get them out of college. They get, they're, a lot of them have master's degrees. They come in, they're kind of newbies. They're not that familiar with things. It takes them a while to develop their relationships. They're there for a year or two and then they leave. So what, what, the issues that they've had down in Nurs Shell and Palom, it's kind of a mirror image of what we've had too. So it hasn't been ideal, but when you get a good person like Ed from way back when, you know, and he was like the standard for which everything has been judged against, is, is positive. That's why they feel. And Martha right now, who's been at high school for a month, they feel very positive about her, so.
And Carla, this is her second year at middle school.
All the positive letters, et cetera, so.
Yeah. And also the Kids in Crisis, it also covers the safe haven for kids. It's a 24/7 hotline and literally a location for them, physical location to go if they are in need of safety concerns.
Would it be, and I understand we're only going to apply because the position was open for a period of time, so we have the credit there. Would it be inappropriate to ask if, if we give $20,000 to the credit and put 10,000 back up and get it out?
This is credit only, this is a credit.
No, no, no. I understand it's a credit, but we're applying the credit to the, to the 144.
I think that's really where it is. I think a 50 cloud for get about is, we, one of the issues was that each year we're going up percentage wise. So we were 47 the last year, a year ago, and 46 the year before that was get about.
Bethany, I would just check and make sure I have the credit that's being used for right now to cover the people. You're sure of that?
Talking with Kids in Crisis, that is to be decided.
Okay. I'm, I'm just concerned because that's what we have been, that I have been told. So I just want to make sure you guys have that learned.
We do, and that hasn't been decided yet between, the last meeting I had with Sheri Shapiro, the director, Denise Quahley, that, that is going to be side tabled right now to make sure, the main concern is to get this teen talk counselor in, but no commitment has been made or that there was.
Who's paying for the middle school right now?
That, it was something between, that, that's a whole nother subject.
I know.
But it's, it's not, we're paying for the high school teen talk counselor and that money is teen talk counselor high school. So that is something that is being put aside and whatever it takes to keep this middle school teen talk counselor.
Okay.
So who's picking up the other 48 next year?
So public side.
This is for the year, this is for the year beginning July 1? So who's, who's going to pick up that other 48? Is that the private?
Right.
Sources that we?
Correct. And also Jackie has a grant, Jackie DeLuigi, the youth family counselor. She gets a state grant, but she said it's possible, you know, that yearly about 25,000 to 27,000. Once again, this qualifies as, as a remediation or a grant spending deliverable. So we can use that as well.
Ross, the reason I like to hold on to that credit is because next year, there's going to be issues. We're not going to have the opioid, most likely. We're not going to have, you know, from our credit going to 22 now, which will have up over that bills attempt.
No, I, I, you know, Harrison, I under, I completely understand having it in the bank, right? And, but I also, you know, when we talk about marginal increases, I keep coming back to, and this is just my opinion. I'm, you know, I'm open to all the commissioners here equally is, is if we set those two or three priorities that we say are extremely important to this commission, they may have to see a greater than 6% increase. You know, the cost of insurance right now is skyrocketing, cost of fuel, maintenance. I mean, the inflation is, is a real thing. And when you're putting together a budget, I mean, I put together budgets all the time. You realize some things are, are way above 6% and having to cut it. So I just don't want us to be myopic that we're, you know, we're starting at this level and we're just going to hit everybody small incrementals. I think we need to, again, get those two or three priorities and whatever they need in support, that we get all this information ahead of time, right, that we can justify it. And we sit down and, and make those tough decisions. And I think that's appropriate because not only it's defensible. It's defensible to the selectman who says, you know, we need to make budgetary cuts. It's defensible to the Board of Finance. And I, I just think from a procedural standpoint, that's the most appropriate way to, to do it.
I, I just want to add, I totally agree. It would be great if we could fund get about at a higher level for all those good reasons. I think just personally, this whole process has made me realize that what we need to do as a commission is step back and have kind of a robust discussion about what can we fund, what can't we fund. I don't know that this is the moment to kind of do that. I feel like maybe after this process, we can talk about what's available in the community. What can, you know, what, what organizations are the most important for us based on our priorities? And then also what, you know, what other resources? And then also what, you know, what other resources are available, philanthropic and, you know, foundations and that kind of thing. I feel like this is do you agree?
Yes, yes.
So Brad, I think for now, we've got to kind of get through this and figure out, you know, what what we can all agree to as a commission, but certainly that get about would be a priority to me and and help and the, you know.
Peter, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, obviously some lessons learned in in our process here, and I think there's a lot we can do to sort of improve, but given given where we are. I think, you know, we have an excellent director here who is obviously very carefully considered all of these recommendations. And I think the supports are are really there. And again, if there's one area that we probably do need to lean in on is kind of the the school and the mental health areas there. I mean, the latest state numbers, thirty six percent of high schoolers often feel deep sadness and hopelessness. Twenty nine percent say that their mental health most of the time or always is not good. Eighteen percent are physically harming themselves and fourteen percent are seriously considering suicide. So that's the that's the house on fire in the world today. And if we've got to lean anyway, which this buzzed budget does, which was what's so disturbing about the the original Saks recommendation. To the extent we have to lean one way or the other, that would be my recommendation. And I think that's pretty well reflected in the in the budget. So I mean, I I don't know if this is the time to negotiate a few dollars here or there. You know, is that our job, given where we are? It seems to me this is overall a very strong recommendation and very well supported, but definitely lessons learned so that we as a commission can deeply talk about these things ahead of time as a commission under the gun, because we've got some good voices in the room and these are very, very tough calls. And that's my kind of bigger concern is process. And how do we do this collectively better the next time, the next time through?
My my observation would be that we we're coming up with a budget dollar. But we're also expressing this growing recommendation that we have to have counselors at both Saks and the high school and that we have to fund get about at a sufficient level to keep that service, at least at the level it's at now, not greater. So that's not a budget recommendation, but it's it's a we're sort of underwriting the cost of the town, the teen counselor. Somebody somebody else is going to come up with the other money. We're not quite sure the details of that. We're a little bit on the hook. The town is to pay that person's salary.
Yeah, and if what, if you look at the area wide, the county, you know, people are adding on more of the kids in crisis, twenty four seven counselors, educators at all levels. I just can't imagine New Canaan saying, taking one away. To me, that is not the message. I don't want, as human services, I I want to be thought of as advocating for what we do. And I feel like the commission is the same. This is not the time to take away a mental health counselor from our school system when, as Peter just read the statistics, and if you read the New Canaan urgent assessment statistics, the majority of the of the people coming to the assessment are between the ages of seven and twenty four. And there you go. So I I consciously, conscientibly, I just think we need to move forward and advocate for our community because individual well being is community well being. And I just can't stress that enough.
Just so I'm clear, and when you looked at what we spent in twenty twenty three, eighty five thousand, that did not, that was just from the full time person at the high school, correct?
Correct. Yes, that was the high school teen talk counselor. It was actually, it was, it was, that was less than what the counselor was. Historically, if you notice in twenty twenty one, we paid fifty six thousand. Historically, New Canaan and kids in crisis began together. We were very supportive. And so for years, we paid under value of what the teen talk counselor really costs. But as as the years have gone by and COVID, the funding that kids in crisis has been able to put towards the teen talk counselor for New Canaan, it's getting harder and harder each year. And also they're taking on more and more teen talk counselors because at the request of of the of the other school systems. So that is why we've gone up ninety six, fifty six. That was not the salary. It was higher than that. Oh, but the actual was ninety. We did add.
That's what I'm saying. And in the next year, it was at eighty five. So in essence, we're we're adding a half time person at Saks, right?
Right. And it's only full time too. We can't do a half part timer in terms of the consistency in the daily schedule.
So running half of their salary.
So half of their salary.
Yep.
There's no way for a half a part timer.
But the other half, we're counting on coming from those sources. And if it doesn't, I would think the town will help. Is that right?
Well, it's working with kids in crisis as well. They want to work with us.
In the past, they did.
Yeah, they they want to work with us. At the same time, we want to make it a sustainable.
Commissioner Ellis, Megan Teague, so Bethany, do you agree that we should keep kind of as much as possible of the credit in the bank for next year because we're anticipating?
That is depending on the thirty two thousand and working with kids in crisis on that in terms of where we can get it. It does, it it's negotiable. So I can't, without knowing the details, but I do know that it's on the table. But it has to be an agreement with kids in crisis as well as to where that goes. But there are talks that perhaps trying to make this all work for next year. I know this year, the there, there's question about who is paying for the Saks middle school teen talk counselor. As a commission, we are responsible for the high school teen talk counselor. So between the board of ed or the New Canaan public school system and kids in crisis, they're going to have to figure that out. But at the same time, we are you're proposing, we want to keep this teen talk counselor. So where that money goes, we will figure it out. But there's thirty two thousand floating around between kids in crisis and.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to you to have the comparison of how these are funded by different towns.
Yeah.
And that's a good guidepost for us too, as we talk about, you know.
If you know, yeah, Richfield, Renage, you can see all the.
Westport has a part time drug now for counseling in addition, and there's, you know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, Darian's board of ed pays for the teen talk counselor.
That was going to be my next question.
Okay.
When do we get, or is it possible to have a conversation early on with board of education about rather than doing it in budget season time to figure out where the money comes from? So that we're from the get go, figuring out.
Yeah, it's working with the board of ed. They have a huge budget. Human services, I think, has, don't quote me, but I believe the second lowest, smallest budget of town departments. So, yeah, working with seven hundred thousand versus what, twenty two million? So, but yes, I would like to form some type of partnership. They were kind enough, the ARPA funds, board of ed gave us two years of of the Saks middle school teen talk counselor. And from the letters that we have of from the principal of Saks as well as the director of student services, it's valuable. It it has worked, but the funding has gone away.
Right.
And we still want to keep. So this is where.
And sometimes there's money at the end of their budget cycle, right?
There could be. I I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be better to be front loaded.
Front loaded, exactly. Exactly. But we knew this was going to happen, that that we would, you know, have to be looking for funds of, as I said, the board of ed was gracious with their ARPA fund, gave one or two of it. But now with the understanding that we would have to be working for this next.
Right. Well, I think it is as part of a philosophical kind of practical conversation about what can we fund, what should we fund, and, you know, what's available.
Harrison, I think for the sake of time, we've got to move down the line.
Okay.
Well, I just, I just want to, I was just going to make the recommendation. I think the the top three items are the things that we're talking about, Harrison. I don't know if you we want to spend, you know, other time on the items if you want.
I think we have to address the whole budget though.
Okay.
For the presentation of the board of.
Sure.
Okay, everything else is a little more explainable. The numbers are a little clearer.
Yeah, New Canaan cares, it's the eighteenth hour, and that's eight is coming from us and ten from the opioid settlement. So that's again, blacking our burden, but giving New Canaan cares what they are happy to receive. Because we did, we had cut that back and then we pumped it up again. So then we go child guidance center. You know, we have numbers of kids from New Canaan who are being cared for there. That periodically sends out the numbers we get from them. And so we're we're back to five thousand with that, which I think seems appropriate.
And for that, if you know, the it's a great, great feeder for the New Canaan urgent assessment. This is where we have a full spectrum of of having the urgent assessment program. Somebody comes in, they're on Husky Medicaid, it doesn't pay for counseling, therapy, but child guidance center can cover it. And so this is where we're creating a full circle. We do a gentle, warm handoff with the capabilities of paying for continued support right into child guidance center. So.
The domestic violence crisis center, you know, we had cut back on that, but you've got the numbers of the last meeting, you probably have to refile there. So it's impressive, the increase in need. And so they're back up to ten thousand with our present budget. Comments about that?
Well, the only thing is we don't know if the needs increased or we're just seeing. But the needs there.
Yeah.
And we need the budget.
Two hundred and fifty seven thousand. Two hundred and seventy seven.
And I'm not sure that it matters, which it is. It is an increase in services. That's what we need to address.
Yeah. Maybe it's kind of clueless now we're getting.
Well, it has gotten worse since COVID, I think. It was definitely an uptick in that. But more people are aware of the service and they're.
And the stigma is lessening in terms of help is there and it's out there, right, people are feeling. Comfortable, disturbing.
Meals on Wheels, we're at the five thousand level.
You're going down. Oh, no, you're staying at one. You're staying at five.
Been pretty consistent with that for the last five years. Community program, mental wellness, that's pretty much the vigil. And they're happy with those numbers and really aren't looking for more. And we sustain that. We contribute that and we support the vigil pretty much. New Canaan urgent assessment. So we're, you know, we're bound to pay that. And that was not on the table for any any change. But what we've been able to do is we moved twenty five K from the opioid settlement to to that. So that decreases our burden per se, but we're still giving fifty to New Canaan urgent assessment. And then the last four categories, the Catholic Charities, Elder House, Family Centers, Community Action. Family Centers, which I use a lot in practice, one of the centers for holding. Apparently, our usage has increased with that. There's been a change in personnel, et cetera. So Bethany and Marcy and Jackie were okay with cutting back on that. So we did, and that accommodates the selectmen's goal of not really distributing small amounts to agencies, which really don't use us pretty exclusively. Elder House, I guess we got two ones going there from.
Going on, so Elder House, looking at the get about statistics, they were driving quite a few last year when we started the partnership, the get about would drive there. But it has declined. And that is not necessarily a satisfaction number. It's just somebody, you know, indicating not needing it anymore or advanced to a state where they don't need, you know, it it's cyclical. It's cyclical. And right now we're we're not seeing the numbers in order to support somebody's need to pay to go there.
Catholic charities, we've cut back on and also Community Action Agency of Western Connecticut. So in some ways, reaching out, helping us reach our goal of two forty nine, two fifty nine, whatever. Also accommodate wishes directly to grab money more too. For those that exclusively care for New Canaan New Canaanites, of course, the child guidance center is it's multi distributed, a domestic violence center, but we have significant numbers going in those two directions. So bottom line here, we have under Bethany's twenty five documentation, number two, two fifty nine, five. I would like to throw in ten from next year's credit from coming from the teen talk counselor kids in crisis. Just get it down to what we're asked for, the two forty nine, five. That would leave twenty two in credit for next year. But I think we will move to.
The problem with using monies when you, when you talk about a program, next year, when it comes back, it's going to be that the same number that it is right now. And so if you put it in the budget as to what the actual number is, really reflects what our need is and how it gets paid for is something else. You know?
Well, that that absolute number is going anywhere. The chestnut may have two different sources.
But I mean, the directive from the board of finance at that wonderful meeting where you made that incredible presentation was come back and tell us what you need. And they can make a decision, you know, and say, well, I want to get you back to this level.
That would be implied to put the big number and say, to the master's, and say, there are sources of funding offset the costs. Credit and the opioid and both of those are temporary.
Right.
And it doesn't reflect what what the actual number is to supply the, you know, the, whether the service.
But the commitment the commitment is to sustain these services into the future, first of all. We don't, we don't, this is not just a low off. And the cost, the sustained level of expenses, the big number. Again, we have sources of temporary support that make it possible to come in with a better budget this year. I I would sort of be upfront about that rather than pretend that it's coming in with a real low number.
Remember, we were asked for, we're, you know, we're helping. We asked it around. I'd like to use some of that credit, but, you know, I don't want to.
I think that can be figured out later. I mean, that's what, and that's why I said that that part is a little nebulous, but the important thing is, is this two fifty nine, five. This is what I, this is what I need to work from or I want to work from for fiscal year twenty six. Like, I don't want to work from less ten thousand. But that part we can figure out and the go, but at the same time, yeah, I do want the board of finance we're asking for two fifty nine.
I I would recommend that we not look at it as an incremental budget, that we look at actual the needs of the community and we determine what those numbers need to be, not on a, you know, an incremental basis. So from my perspective, and again, I have one of nine, as Harrison said, whatever we did this year needs to go behind us and need to look and evaluate what the needs of the community are and either make a recommendation based on that. And and I have to say, you know, cutting ten and cutting there, I mean, that's rounding errors when you're looking at the the in total budget. And also the last point is, we're basically saying two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars are going to go towards kids. Only fifty five thousand dollars are going towards seniors and only ten thousand dollars going towards domestic violence. When you add, when you add all those numbers up. And if that, that is the message, I would just tell and warn us that our senior community is growing dramatically and the population needs are. And I just think that we need to put more attention and more dollars towards some of the seniors with the understanding that we're going to do an assessment of the seniors' needs and coming back, but it may be more than six percent from next year. It may be reallocated. We need to, as a commission, spend a lot more time on looking at the needs and putting real numbers together. And whatever the budget numbers is, is what the budget numbers are. And then we'll just have to address it at that point in time.
And I.
That's just my, again, one person.
I mean, we're replicated, if that's the right word. So we have the seniors, we have the kids. And with Peter's numbers, Peter, what was the source of those numbers that you quoted? Because they seemed high to me.
State of Connecticut. Department, Department of Public Health.
I also want to say.
And those numbers are a little dated. I think they're up from when they came in. It was released last year and national numbers are higher. And all those numbers are up between three and five percentage points from when it was done two years previously. So the trend is going in the wrong direction. And you talk to anybody in the schools and they will tell you it's really going in the wrong direction. So, I mean, I'm happy to give you, it's it's public. So, I mean, I'm happy to give you, it's, it's publicly available, the Department of um, um, Health and State of Connecticut.
Thank you.
I also want to add in terms of uh for seniors in New Canaan, yes, the Get About obviously is, is for the seniors primarily. New Canaan Cares works with the seniors in New Canaan. Domestic Violence Crisis Center, we get women uh of, of older age that are, that are coming to it. Meals on Wheels, seniors homebound. Uh, the vigil, we have people come that have been for thirty-five years, have been uh in, in alcohol and addiction-free, uh recovered. And then the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program, yes, we're getting, you know, definitely it's a lower number than the kids twenty-four and under, but we are getting people, so there are, we do like to, I just want to know the, for the commission's sake, we, we do have in terms of proportion to, to our demographics, there, it's not just the Get About, and I just wanted to get the other agencies that are part of it. Okay.
Yeah, Carol, so the ambulance corps is largely making seniors to the hospital.
Platform's a huge.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah.
So those are in our budget. Significant dollars.
So can we go back to this discussion about what you present versus how we're gonna pay for things? Because I think that a group of people who don't know a lot about this situation and don't know about these numbers and who initially said to us, we're doing so much more than anybody else around us, which we can now see is really not the case at all, has set a number. And they've set it because they're focused on a larger budget. Um, and I understand wanting to and needing to hear that feedback and come back with that budget. But are we just setting ourselves up to be going back next year and looking like we're asking for this massive budget increase when we're not? We're just saying, we don't have those same, you know, other funds to be pulling from. And I mean, what is the worst-case scenario that we go in and say, this is what we actually need? And they say, well, we're sorry, we're only giving you this much. And then we use those other funding sources to, anyway. You know what I mean?
Yeah, the sustainability.
I don't know if I'm misreading that.
I'm just saying, maybe go in fifty for the um, the.
Just, just go in, as Penny and Russ were saying, and say, this is what the budget needs are. And they are, you know, it's within their right to say, well, we're not giving you that, we're only giving you this. And it might drop us back down to, you know, the two fifty that we're working hard to present to them. But it doesn't really change anything. I mean, I, I know it's hard to go in and say, I know you wanted us to cut fifty thousand, but sorry, we can't. I mean, that's not what any of us want to do, we want to meet the assignment. Um, but I just wonder if it sets us up for an even, you know, more difficult and uphill battle? And if it's okay just to say, we're gonna stand by what we need and you will give us what you decide to give us. And we know as a group that with two hundred and fifty thousand, we can make this work under this plan, under this proposal.
One thing to remember is that we've been asked by elected officials, not ourselves, who are dealing with budget issues, cut our budget by fifty K, so we've attempted to accommodate that.
Yeah.
Was that, was that the board's selection?
Next year, we don't know, yes.
It was board's, but it wasn't the Board of Finance.
Harrison, was it to cut the budget or cut the recommendation?
I mean.
Was it, was to cut recommendation number one by fifteen, is that what?
No, no, the two ninety-five was to cut, you know, we would be going up quote twenty percent unquote uh per year. You know, there are explanations for it, like the New Canaan Urgent Assessment. But um, yeah, and if we could whittle our budget down by fifty thousand, it's two ninety-nine. Two forty-nine. So, I mean, that's the background there.
I'm just inclined to say what? I, I listened to Cole and he said, tell me what you need. I mean, you know, I don't know, I, you can always, they can always say, no, I, how does the, how does the peanut gallery fish?
From a peanut, Eric, can I, can I just comment on what I did say to the Board of Finance? Uh, is that, that the budget needs to reflect what it is at a level of social services that our community wants to be providing, right? And if the real number is greater than we think we can afford, then it's a public policy discussion to have. Who are we as a community and what level of services, you know, do we want to provide? The reaction of the Board of Finance that we were cutting fifty thousand uh was like, you know, and I made a little flip comment that you could take with chips off of the trails at Wagonie Park for fifty thousand, if your public policy philosophy is one of, a level of delivery of, of, you know, services. And when you look at some of the numbers, just say domestic violence, those are outstanding numbers. And everybody kind of, five hundred and sixty, you know, approaches to um the department is a lot. And it says a lot about what's going on in the community and people's reactions to everything. So it says that they reacted as positively as they did to the concern about cuts um but versus the level of delivery of services. I think we need, in all fairness to them, paint the picture of who we are as the department sees us. And if that's not a public policy the Board of Finance and the Town Council want, that's another level of discussion.
Thank you.
We still have to fund half of the Kids in Crisis SACT Council, right?
Yes.
And do we know the appetite pronounced from other nonprofits for grant making? Do we know that that's gonna come easily? And what is the timing for hiring a Teen Talk, uh Teen Talk Councilor? Do we need to have that funding upfront? Um, and have those commitments from other grant-making agencies before we can hire one?
Bethany, you talked to Lauren at the foundation.
Right, so there, there's different possibilities of in, in terms of the agencies that have come forward. This is what they have requested, and I think we have stayed, we have honored. Um, my recommendation is very close to what they have requested. I'm not, I don't know what they're gonna request next year.
Bethany, is it correct to say that if we give, we, they get the one forty-four Kids in Crisis that operate the counselor in SACT? And they'll find the money?
Well, as part of Kids in Crisis, we'll, we will work with Kids in Crisis and other
Okay.
to, to get that money, to raise that money. And Kids in Crisis is serious about maintaining that too. So it'll happen no matter what.
We'll have, the, the person will be on staff starting next year. We give our one forty-four.
If we approve this, we'll have.
It gets approved.
Well, it gets approved at, at, at the final level. But yes, but this is what you, we'd like to approve, they've requested one forty-four. We're recommending one forty-four. I mean, we're, we're honestly, the, what, we have to look back and see what they are requesting. And that sort of drives our numbers each year as well. So the total this year was, they requested a total of all the agencies, three hundred and fifty-four thousand. We have taken away um forty, fifty-three thousand uh from agencies that we are not going to cover. They are outside agencies that we, our level of working with them is high, but at the same time, um, the usage, we've only given them one year last year of twenty-five hundred dollars. So cutting back fifty-three thousand, so really, they've asked us, the in-town agencies have asked us for three hundred thousand. Um, and we're looking at two fifty-nine, five. So I do think we are.
Well, look, as, as, as we've said before, Commissioner Markelle, uh, we're putting in a hundred and forty-four, knowing that there is a, you know, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollar credit that's still out there that can be applied to it.
It's an option, and as, as we have, you know, I don't, I don't want to bank on it, but I would say it's part of our resources that, um, oh, let me see, the original, yeah, we do have a Teen Talk High School credit of thirty-two thousand. Uh, we also, we have the New Canaan Community Foundation. We have our Human Service Discretionary Fund that people have donated to at the Discretion of Human Services. We have the Opioid Settlement. Uh, we have Kids in Crisis who does their funding. Um, there are a number of avenues that I, I, I will bank on it, we, we will get this money and we will keep this Teen Talk Counselor, if it's approved, at the level of maintaining the.
Uh, did I make a, a motion?
Please do.
Okay. Um, so I make a motion the following. Given the budgetary concerns that the commissioners have and, and challenge us to be prudent with the mothers, the selectmen, sorry, the selectmen have in, in, in terms of being prudent with our dollars in consideration of, of the teen counselor position being open for a period of time last year, providing us credit um to that, uh considering a nice balance and discussion between kids, seniors, and domestic violence with all those in the opioid settlement. Thank you, thank you, Tom. Uh, I'd like to make the following recommendation. Get about the sixty-five thousand, Kids in Crisis, one forty-four, we're gonna keep there. Thirty-four thousand dollar credit, which we'll work through later. Eighteen thousand for New Canaan Cares, five thousand for Child Guidance Center, fifteen thousand for domestic violence, given the increase in domestic violence that we've seen in our, our community and providing more attention to that. Meals on Wheels, five. Community Program Mental Health Wellness, twenty-five hundred. And then Urgent, New Canaan Urgent Assessment, the twenty-five plus the twenty-five, fifty thousand. Basically, it adds fifteen thousand to the fif, to fifty-nine, which is less than our original uh request of two ninety-nine. I think it shows that we've been very prudent with the dollars, we've considered the selectmen's input, but that the needs of our community must, must uh override what we think is a, is a commission. If it goes to the Board of Finance and they want us to come back and, and make further adjustments, then we can certainly do that. But I think we're, we're committed to, as a mission, of seeing what's in our community, our statistics that we're showing, the issues that we have, and making sure that we're putting priority to that.
So you're supposed to have twenty-four.
Two seventy-four, five.
No, it's two seventy-nine. Fifteen to Get About and five to Domestic Violence, five more.
No, it's, yes, you're right.
Domestic Violence.
So it's twenty, it's two seventy-nine.
Six, sixty to.
Sixty to Get About.
Well, I thought you said sixty, I'm sorry, I thought you said seventy-nine.
And then definitely is, is New Canaan Cares eight, and then ten is coming from opioid or not?
Yes.
You would put it in as a.
But we wanted to, pardon me?
You put it in as a four eighteen.
Yes, it is, to reflect that, for moving forward each year.
Okay, then have below, you just have twenty-five for Urgent Assessment.
Correct, because that, that, yeah. But that, yeah, that was an item that we, we, was placed in our budget.
Well, we have a, have a motion on the table, and the interest of.
Maybe just one, one, Bethany, does that, Russ, the, the big move here is obviously in Get About, um, that Russ is proposing. Uh, we've talked about that a tiny bit, but Bethany, is this square to your balancing of all the issues? Um, eh, eh, as, as best you can see in terms of the proportionality? And I'll, I'll, I'll personally support where you want to go on that particular point, but I think your final recast is the one that I'm gonna pay most attention to.
Okay, and I just want to say, the, um, if, if we, Ross, I wanted to confirm your, your, the motion is for five, for fifteen thousand to domestic violence when they'd asked for ten?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I have a hard, I'm gonna have a hard time with that in terms of um defending my thesis on that one, uh, but we can say it's the commission. It's just that then it's a slippery slope, then I mean, you're.
Cause you've cut ten thousand.
We've cut ten thousand other places and then to give more than was requested by the.
No, I understand, but again, that is, that is giving more, saying that we're putting more emphasis on domestic violence and they can use that money to, for more marketing, for more education, for New Canaanites, for a lot more programmatic items.
My perspective is, we've been asked to, man, with a, a budget of, as we spoke about, two forty-nine, five. Get About, uh, real or unreal, they had a banner year, the elections have been told from number sources, uh contributions. Um, Domestic Violence, we were trying to cut that back to twenty-five hundred, bumped it up to ten, and now, Russ, you want to move it to fifteen. I mean, I'm not in favor of Russ's numbers. I think that's not what we've been asked to do, we've worked in the confines of what we know, Bethany's experience, our own experience. I think we should peel it back to, I mean, my perspective is two forty-nine, five. I think we should use some of the credit money we have. You never know, I mean, we can go for a year or beyond without a Teen Talk Council. And because they can't get them. And what I told you about the experience in Nerschel Telon mirrors what we, so.
I, I would move that we go with Bethany's, the yellow column here. With a footnote that we're anticipating, uh, they'll go use ten thousand towards the Kids in Crisis, four forty-four from the.
Which I have on the, yeah. I just, I think it's very important that we keep it at two fifty-nine, five. Uh, and then I, we can work with, it's like below, with the notes below, uh, in terms of proposals, but actual, I want to reflect the original request, I think it's really important. But to say, you know, to start saying where the money's coming from, this and that, I, that is another level. But I think we just need, we need to vote on the numbers itself, and then where those numbers come from, we have some wiggle room in terms of credits, opioid funds, uh, private funding. And that's what I would work on for this year is the sustainability aspect.
Okay, Russ has had the motion on the floor, we've had the discussion. All those in favor of Russ's motion, say aye.
Can I ask one, one question? Sorry. Um, sorry, Bethany, sorry. Um, what about, what about, um, would you be able to defend the ten to Get About and no other increases?
Um, yes, I can, because it's within the main, the request, yes. Yes.
So we're not at all concerned about sending the message that it's, uh, no big deal, we can handle all of this for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars when we know actually it requires a lot of you to manage all of this?
But this is what they've requested.
When they?
The, the agencies, I'm going on based on what the agencies.
No, I get that, but just in terms of, you know.
There, there was a letter that went back.
That people not a part of our group are not gonna really register that we have these credits and we're using this and.
But because they're not sustainable.
Right, and, and then we won't have them next year.
We do have those credits, it's, we might have other ones next year, but I don't want that to be the.
You feel like it's mixing the message too much to say, we actually need this, but we're able to work around it with this.
Yeah, but yeah, that, that, that is another level. I, in terms of passing this, the agency grants, I, I'm looking at that.
Yeah.
Um, and it should not be a reason because we've got extra money next year, thirty-two, forty-two, fifty-two. It helps.
Yeah.
But I have to keep this number up in terms of, based on the request, my recommendation. Um, but I want also to be transparent that we do have some extra money so that this year, this coverage, we can handle it.
But if we go with Bethany's recommendations, everything we're committed to in terms of teen counselor, support of Get About and the other things, will happen. So we're not cutting anything back. Probably need to put everybody on notice that in the future, we may need more money if some of these temporary sources.
And I say it every year, I say it every budget season, I do say it. I always say, you know, this is creeping up. Yes, it is, and every year I have to go back and give my reasoning, defend the thesis of why we need these numbers.
Yeah, yeah, what I would, what I would suggest, I mean, it's a balanced approach, but I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of work that got to the two fifty-nine, balancing a whole bunch of different things, and there are great arguments all around. I would be okay with approving the two fifty-nine, as Bethany talks about, subject to our commitment to what Penny and Russ have talked about, which is, what do we stand for as a community on social services and what do we want to be? And let's begin this next year really talking about that and go through a proper process where we're aligned at that level, because that's what this is all about. Our numbers generally reflect that, but we just haven't had time to really consider all these things from a process point of view, the way we need to, and if we start with that piece, this budget will be, make a lot more, it'll be much more rounded and aligned to where we truly want to go. Um, because we are where we are, it's late in the game for this year, and I think everybody's done a great job here, a lot of great work. So my sense is approve this, but then a real commitment to having a very different process, starting soon, getting to the broader. starting soon, getting to the broader policy strategy issues that Penny and Russ have raised, which I think are really important.
Melissa, FYI, this, Jana Carlson and Bill Post is the head of Get About. There was, and this is when we whittled it down to thirty-five thousand. There was communication back and forth and they settled for, I think there was some happening on both sides, although Penny will tell you something. But anyway, so we're back up to fifty. So, Tom, you want to make a?
Well, I recommend, I, I would move that we present or recommend the Bethany's yellow column recommendation number two, that it's presented with the understanding that we would have twenty-five thousand from the opioid settlement and funds perhaps ten thousand to offset the current year cost of Kids in Crisis Council.
Well, that, that whittles it down and.
No.
It whittles it down to two forty-nine.
That, that would be, I wouldn't present the two forty-nine.
Then, then you're leaving the ten out.
I would mention that that's available if somebody wants to cut one of the ten thousand.
So we have ten thousand going to New Canaan Cares as well for the opioid settlement. And we're talking, these are numbers, it's just, I, I want to stress the importance of having these numbers so I can go on for next year and I look at next year's fiscal year twenty-six budget, which starts up four months after I end this one.
Finish your motion, Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I, I actually had a question. We're, we're taking the ten out of, twenty-five out of the urgent assessment, but we're not taking ten out of New Canaan Cares, so we're adding ten, we're giving them eight plus the ten from opioid, that would make sense.
But Tom, I see what you're saying, like, why are we subtracting from them? Okay, because this is the New Canaan Urgent Assessment Program that we have to, that is a public-private partnership and we have a one-year contract that is off fiscal year. And so another contract has to be made between Silver Hill and the town. So this is not an ongoing historical expenditure that we have been supporting. This was put in our department and we are honoring it, we are honoring it, but I'm also, it's, I don't know how long, is it a special project that the town should take on?
We're probably going to need to reassess the whole program.
That whole program needs to be assessed, but I know New Canaan Cares is here to stay in terms of the funding, but New Canaan Urgent Assessment, I hope it's here to stay too, but I do think it needs to be discussed where it's going to go, if this is going to be year after year after year. And this year we were added, it was added to our budget, fifty thousand, and I just don't want any of these other agencies to suffer because we had to find the gap.
If we give the eighteen, appropriate eighteen for New Canaan Cares, they don't give an extra ten for the opioid.
No. We will take the eighteen, and that's what I will, right, that eighteen, but this year it'll come, I'm not saying next year it will, maybe we will get more money in opioid and we will continue that.
So it seems, say that the budget hit, this recommendation, two forty-nine, but we recommend, the commission's recommending that the budget, two fifty-nine, and take advantage of the opioid settlement, to say ten, but we're committed to the eighteen. That's the level of commitment that we want to make towards New Canaan Cares.
The ten opioid was going to New Canaan Cares.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to try one more time, this is my last.
It's the ten of, the ten of the credit that we were using towards Teen Talk.
Our, our mission, as I understood it when I gave, raised my right hand and gave my oath, is to look at the community and look at what the needs of the community are and to make recommendations to the board of finance, make recommendations to our first elect, that this is what is needed, these are the services that are needed. COVID hit, guess why? Changed the budget, carried process on its head. Domestic violence is way up. Suicidal ideations are way up. To go from a, just an incremental process to me is we're not doing our job, I'm not feeling I'm doing my job, to approve an incremental and looking at a budget. My job, my job that I take personally, and spend a lot of time reading through all these materials, is to say this is what our community's needs are and this is what our community needs are, this is what they need. I leave it up to the board of finance, I leave it up to the first elect to come back and say, we realize that, but we need to, we, we only have this amount of money to set aside. But our mission is to determine what the needs of the communities are and what we need to do to improve the health and wellbeing of our community.
Any more discussion before we go on to Tom's motion?
Did you finish it? I want to second John's motion.
Want to say it again, Tom?
I, I move that we recommend the recommendation number two from Bethany and subject to the mentioning that opioid settlement offsets the twenty-five thousand on purchase assessment, that's a, and that will be reassessed in the future, next year, after another year of operation. And that we recommend that we continue full support to get about increasing by six percent, that we are committed to a teen talk counselor at Saks. And this includes half the cost of that, the other half coming from other sources that are being worked on. And Kids in Crisis is on board with that. It was known that we're not giving money to the four middle agencies of the bottom, that is, no, it was cut.
So bottom line, two five nine. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Three?
Peter, we can't see it.
Peter, read in favor?
I was, I'm in favor. Aye.
Both three in favor. Thank you all. I'm going to defer the next item on the agenda for some time until our next meeting. So our next meeting is scheduled for March seventh, which is two weeks away. I think we can cancel that meeting and then we will meet on April fourth and we will discuss our item number two about the calendar and the meetings today. All those in favor of the canceling the meeting on March?
Harrison, I'm sorry, why would we cancel the meeting?
Why would we cancel it?
It's March seventh?
Yeah.
It's two weeks away.
But we, but it's a regular meeting.
You can cancel a regular meeting, eh?
No, but you get to hear from them.
But this topic will percolate in the next two weeks and remain.
Yeah, we.
I mean, I have to take some action.
I go in front of the board, February twenty-seventh. It's up to you, but I'm just saying I.
We may be, we may be.
We'll submit what you just proposed.
It was, it was, there's momentum in the move to decrease the frequency of the meetings despite.
And who's marking who?
Jen, I think Russ was part of the deal. I myself periodically, before we had the speakers, et cetera, we're having meetings to have meetings, but there was no.
Well, Harrison, I think we've got, we've got lots to talk about. If, if we, if we're talking about policy and things like that and what we want to be as a town, we're not having meetings to have meetings. I'm not.
Yeah, granted, but occasionally there are non-issues that we are doing. So I'm just throwing it out, this was brought up, I've been on this commission for five-plus years and it's always been month, month, but it's not. We can determine the frequency of our meetings and there is some sentiment to decrease the frequency of the meetings.
I, I think that's.
So we want, we can air it out, we can discuss and then we can vote on it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think that's fine. Let's, let's have that discussion if there is that sentiment, Harrison, I'm fine with that, but.
Pull that to the next meeting.
Wait, what were you going to say?
Peter, seven?
Yeah, I think, I think you should have this meeting because we don't know, there may be a lot of things happening February twenty-seventh.
We can recall the meeting. We can have another special meeting. If you cancel this, he's got a problem doing it. I don't think there will be a report, I think it's going to be done, be over the budget.
Harrison, Harrison, this is a very dynamic moment for our commission right now and we've got a lot to talk about and align on and big issues are happening in our community on this stuff. And it's up to us to make the, the meetings actually count, but it's like, it's like pulling the budget back. Like at this moment, we're going to pull back the frequency of meetings of Health and Human Services when it's a really big deal?
We're scheduled to meet in two weeks, so there are pressing issues, maybe this becomes one, but I think this will be done. So I was just, can't, going, offering the proportion to cancel the meeting on, on March seventh. And then we were going to discuss what was brought up at the end of last meeting and there was kind of a vibrant discussion to decrease the frequency of the meetings and look at the calendar. So that's the only issue that I'm addressing and bringing up now. And you'll have your vote, whatever it is, if you want to continue. We'll discuss it the next meeting. Motion on the floor now is to cancel the March seventh meeting and we will reconvene on April fourth.
We have a decision.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to clarify that I think maybe we had a misunderstanding during that discussion last time, that what we were talking about was not decreasing the, the number and frequency of meetings that we have. Yeah, we talked about it every other, but using that in between to really discuss these bigger picture issues that cause us to have a struggle when we have something like this come up because we haven't really figured out our big picture issues.
We talked about not having Bethany and Jen report every.
Not having Bethany and Jen wear every other month.
Some people's perception, but their perception was decrease card launch, frequency of meetings over in every other month.
Well, I would just suggest for people to think about, because I did think it was an interesting conversation, that for Jen and Bethany, they may not need to come and report numbers to us every single month. They could maybe reduce to every other month and then we could use that off month when they aren't here for our larger mission discussions about what are our priorities and.
How can we find funds for the resources?
We have, we have motion on the table. Our common table is to cancel the March seventh meeting. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We will reconvene on March seventh.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I'm going to stop recording. Thank you, everybody.